Yep.
Yep.
Let's call the January 17, 2003 City Council meeting in this session. Roll call.
Gesmi.
Here.
Growth.
Here.
Jepson.
Here.
Johnson. Diane, your microphone is off. She's here. Cronenberger.
Here.
There she is.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I would entertain a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Gesmi. Second?
Second.
Second by Groth. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote. Roll call vote. Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
It carries. Public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the City Council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down. If the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The City Council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. First person tonight, I believe, is it Annie?
Yeah, yeah.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you all. First time I ever happened to be here for something like this, so I apologize. Really just wanted to bring up, we had a notice to comply to an ordinance at our house. We moved here five, going on five years ago with four dogs. I thought I did enough research, thinking that that was the, I looked up to see how many dogs there was. I didn't see any problem. We've been here going on five years, this May. We've never had any problems with our dogs, but somebody anonymously tipped that we had four dogs, where it came to my attention that the law is for three dogs within a house. I am honestly just asking personally, our oldest dog is 13. We don't know how many more years we're going to have it, but obviously, once that happens, we're going to definitely comply. But we're hoping to look to try and either pay for a fine or get some sort of lenience before we have one dog taken away. So, that's it.
During public input, it's usually just, you bring up the issue, there's, it's not a
Okay.
We'll take that into consideration in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Next up, is it Nick?
Actually, I'm later on the agenda.
You're going to speak later on in the agenda, so you're good to go. Perfect. Awesome. So that moves us onto the presentation. We've got our friends, John Birch Park. The supporters will be giving a presentation on the project there.
Hi, everyone, I'm Bucky Lindo, this is Keith Myers. Here's our, our plan for the evening.
Thank you, Buck.
I did not get this to Sarah within the deadline, so I think she sent it to you, but it probably came today, so.
Thank you.
The purpose of this presentation, oh, I'm mic'd up, nice. Purpose of this presentation is to update new and returning members of the Cannon Falls City Council about the improvement projects at John Birch Park, as well as get a resolution from the council to apply for bonding bill funds from the Minnesota Legislature again. That's what we, we did last year. Quick history, back in 2021, we presented a slideshow, which Sarah sent to you all today, a PDF copy of it. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but basically, it looks like this. And it's just kind of the impetus of some things that need to be fixed down there. And as we looked at everything, we thought, let's just get a solid plan together and make sure all these pieces fit together and do a nice job with it. So, that's what the slideshow is. And so, thanks, Sarah, for forwarding that on. Appreciate it. Couple, couple poster boards. The main topic tonight is the wall, the limestone wall. And we've got a couple poster boards that we used last year with the state legislature of why we need to fix the seating and why we need to fix the wall. If anybody wants to ask questions about that, we can tackle those right now, but I think it's pretty clear what needs to happen, and most of you have seen the situation down there. So, that was back in 2021. Item number two there under the history, the park board saw the renderings of the proposed improvements, which you can take a peek at here. We also talked, well, basically, we want to remove the limestone wall, put in a new wall, put in new concrete seating, would also have a grass terrace up here, redo this dugout so it actually gets set into the wall, as part of the wall. And then, that would fit nicely with the existing concession stand. And so, that's the, that's the plan on that side. And that's what we presented to the City Council back in 2021. There's another part of the project on the third base side, which isn't really the focus tonight, but it focuses in, or factors into the dollar amounts that we're going to talk about. So, fortunately for us, last year, and, or late in 2021, Barb Haley authored a request and submitted it into the bonding bill for the Minnesota Legislature. And you can see on item number three here, the funding breakdown. We asked the state legislature for $469,000, and the city said they would kick in $328,000. And we, the John Birch Park supporters, said we can find $141,000 because we thought the total project cost would be about $938,000. We all know inflation has hit, and building materials have skyrocketed and all that kind of stuff. So, we know those numbers aren't accurate or up to date, but at least it's what we had in the bonding bill last year. So, in November of 2021, we presented all of this to what they call the bus tour, and it's a group of legislators that traveled around southeast Minnesota and saw proposals from many cities in many situations, asking for money. In 2022, item number one, the bonding bill was not voted on. So, even though all these people had asked for money, the state legislator just, they never voted on it. So, nobody got any money. So, we're back to square one. We needed new authors, we needed to redo our application, and get it in play for the 2023 legislative session, which just started in, beginning of January. So, as we knew we were waiting for money to do the, what we call the first base side, the wall, and so on, we started working on the third base side. So, that has been rolling on, in 2022. We continue our fundraising efforts. And in 2023, on January 5th, we presented to the park board. Park board said, yeah, come on to the City Council meeting on, on the 17th of January and ask for a resolution so that we can pursue some money from the state. Also at that meeting, the park board meeting, Pam Altondorf was here, and Steve Drazkowski were here, which was awesome, because they made a trip from St. Paul after the session that day, stopped here, showed their support, offered us a little bit of advice, like, try to get some Democrats to sign on. They thought that would be helpful. Try to get many signatures up the dollar amounts, because we know that costs have gone up. I think those were kind of the main
And just to get her more information, so she could speak to it on the floor.
Yeah, so she already agreed to author it, she already agreed to talk to the bonding people, in fact, she already has. She said, I can use the Barb Haley proposal, but you're probably going to want to update it a little bit with different numbers and so on. The financial update, our funding goal was 1.5 million when this started. Right now, or, and part of that would have been the 469,000 from the state of Minnesota and the 328,000 from the city of Cannon Falls. This says currently in the bank, 200,000, but that was on January 5th. Now, we're more like 220,000. And pledged over the next four to five years, this is 464. Right now, we're at 485,000 pledged over the next four years. So, it's been awesome.
And keep in mind, the, the bonding bill is specifically for the first base side. So, that, that number is different than the overall number that we're fundraising, so.
Yeah, so we still need the big chunk of money from the state, the chunk of money from the city, in order to make that side happen. And then, in order to do all the factors of the project, we'll need about 1.5 million altogether. So, so that's what we're hoping for. As far as the project goes, the plan is to demolish the third base dugout June 1st, because we have the money to get rolling on that. Begin building the new dugout, storage deck, bathrooms, concession, or press box. So, that third base side, what is now a dugout, we hope it serves many, many purposes. A dugout, bathroom, so on and so forth. Not really part of this topic tonight, but at least to update people that, you know, that's part of the plan here, part of the project. We do have a few pictures of that just on some, some of our fundraising materials. So, if you're, if you're curious and you want to see those, we can leave some of these here, just so you can see what's happening on the third base side. So, what we're asking for tonight is any questions? Do you need more information, especially if you're a new City Council member and you haven't been on this process for the last couple of years? And then, hopefully, a resolution, I think is the right word, to go ask the state for some money.
Any questions from the council? Donations, obviously money, that's wonderful. When it comes to the project and it starts, you know, this summer, will you be, you know, on social media, asking if people have a Saturday or Sunday to go out there with some tools and help, or? Yeah, I, I think this part of the project, and we're working closely with Neil on this, as long as we don't change the grade of the project or anything like that, I think we can get some things done without the engineering specs. So, we're hoping that we can get some in-kind donations for, for part of this, for part of the third base dugout project. I think that'll be a different conversation for the wall project, because that engineering and heavy equipment, all those things are a lot bigger part of that, so. We're not going to move stone by stone on that. Probably not, no. We're not going to get the conveyor system going, so. But yeah, so I, I think it's, you know, our hope is that we get some, our structural engineer to, to get some things done on the third base side before we show it to everybody and then start doing some bidding, and hopefully, some, some community members will step up and help with, you know, some of the in-kind donations, whether it be labor, you know, knowledge and expertise, obviously, we need, we need people that know what they're doing. And then, you know, guys like me who don't know squat about it can do some grunt work, maybe, so. I just wanted, I mean, John Birch Park is kind of a gem for this area, and you guys put countless hours in there already. So, this project, I think it's amazing. I, I hope this lasts for decades. That wall has been iconic, and we're, we're seeing it crumble right in front of our eyes, and you guys have really picked up the ball and run with it to say, let's fix this, let's get this right for generations to come. So, it's a wonderful project. I think it has complete support from the community and the council.
Well, it's also a safety issue on that one side.
Well, if you look at the, if you look at the wall, it was built in 1937 out of limestone, stacked limestone. We're hoping we can have a little bit more advanced construction materials on this, so. And it lasted 80 years like the way it is, right? So, hopefully, we can push that out a century or more with, with some of the things we can do. We know it's going to, it's going to cost some money, but if we don't do it now, it's going to cost more money in five years. It's going to cost more money in 10 years, and, and we're going to be sitting on something literally crumbling under our feet. Yeah. Just a, if you had to spitball, how much do you think it's kind of splayed out on that first base side in, say, like, the last 15 to 20 years? Did it used to seem very stable, and then it's just kind of like the bottom is falling out, and that's what's really made us accelerate? There, there's always been a gap between the first base dugout and the wall, and I've, you know, obviously, I've, I've gotten a little bigger as I've aged, but it was a lot easier to get through that gap 10, 15 years ago. Now, it's, it's, it's getting down to maybe a foot or less, where it used to be 18 inches to two feet. I just think, if you look at that wall, that bottom is coming, the bottom, the base is coming out. And, and I actually probably have a picture that shows that.
I think we do have a picture of that. This
Oh, yeah.
You can kind of see here, it used to be vertical.
Yep.
And the bottom's coming out, so that's why it's slanting.
Yep.
Yeah. And where that dugout was, like Keith said, it used to be vertical, so you could walk through there easily. But as the bottom keeps coming towards the dugout, the gap keeps getting smaller and smaller.
And if you, if you ever sit on the concrete bleachers now, you can feel yourself tipping towards the field. I don't know if anybody sat down there for a football game in the last couple of years, but you can feel yourself kind of tipping towards, towards the field, so. Whether it be, you know, obviously, we haven't put a level on it, but, you know, just sitting on it, you can feel it. So, anybody that's, that's down there, I'm sure, is, has been aware. Thank you for the presentation. Seeing as how it's on the agenda, can we make the resolution tonight, or does it have to be added to a future council meeting? Okay, wonderful.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yep.
I noticed in the presentation somewhere, it said something about moving the football field to somewhere else?
No, that's not, that's, yeah, that's not part of any
I didn't understand if we ultimately wanted the football field not to be there at all, or just a temporary thing?
Nothing that we presented tonight. Maybe if you're thinking of a presentation from a couple of years ago, that might have been part of the discussion.
I think it was part of the referendum discussion a couple of years ago from the school district, when they were talking about putting turf behind the school. But since that referendum's gone, didn't go through, I don't think it's really been a topic of conversation since then. There might have been a park board where we discussed how the construction of the project would affect next fall's football season. That might, but it's not in the presentation.
Wait, actually, it's point number one under the green light page, slide number 12.
Part of the, yeah, that
Oh, in the slideshow.
Sure, in the slideshow.
Yeah.
That slideshow is probably three years old, but yeah. That, Diane, that's a good question. That's not part of the plan at this point. Our plan actually would be to try to, when the, when the wall project happens, is to probably shorten the Bears' home season and start the project sometime, hopefully, in, in mid to late summer, so that it would be complete by the, the high school season. You know, maybe the high school would have to push, maybe play, play on the road till mid-September, maybe late September. But our goal, if, if, if it was a perfect world, would be start the project, you know, July 5th, right after the 4th of July ballgame, and try to have it done within 60 days by mid-September, so they could still, you know, there'd still, there would be any safety issues in, in kids being around the construction project while, while they're working on it, so. But yeah, to answer your question, Diane, at this point, I, I think, you know, until the, until the school comes up with a, a way to move football, if that's one of their long-term objectives, I, I don't think we can, we can pull the rug out from underneath them, so. And my brother's a head football coach, so that's kind of near and dear to my heart, too.
Yeah, and probably for everybody else to know, too, that slideshow, like I said, was created when we looked around and we said, okay, we've got a lot of little things here that need to be fixed. And so, we've been working as that, as sort of a, sort of a guideline, but not necessarily we're going to try to do everything that's in that slideshow or, or in that format. So, great question, Diane, thank you.
Anything else from the council?
And Pam Altondorf said she couldn't be here tonight, but as you, anybody that was at park board, you know, she's full support, so she wanted me to pass that on to you.
Great.
Good.
Great. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and, and resolution as council business. I'll read them off. Item A, just incorrect claims of the accounting period, December 31st, 2022. Item B, just incorrect claims accounting up to January 12, 2023. Item C, meeting minutes for January 3rd, 2003 City Council meeting. Item D, the second reading and adoption of the ordinance 389, summary of publication, amending the city code Title III relating to fees, charges, and rates. Item E, approve the upcoming work sessions. Item F, resolution 2670, accepting a monetary donation of $5,600 from the Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association to the fire department. Item G, approve the 2023 fire department officers. Item H, approve pool staff hiring process. Item I, approve Emerald Ashborer DNR grant application. Item J, approve winter parking change. Item K, approve police officer move to part-time and start the process of filling a full-time position. Item L, approve police officer hire. Item M, approve the work steps agreement. Item, or, that was MN, resolution 2671, rezone and administrative subdivision, the lot boundary line adjustment for Stanley Holdings. Is there any item in the consent agenda that the council would like to pull down? No items pulled down? Then I would take a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion is by Lundell.
Second?
I got the second by Lisa first, Diane. It does have to be a roll call vote, so. Motion by Lundell, second by Lisa. Laura? Aye. Lisa?
Aye.
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
It carries. Moving on to council business. The Small Cities Development Program. I believe all of the items that you guys see in council business tonight are related to SEMCRA. That's why we've got Nick here to speak about this. Anything before Nick takes the floor?
No.
It's yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll introduce myself. My name's Nick Coverman. I'm the new Community Development Director for the Southeast Minnesota HRA. Formerly, you had been working with Karen Ducharme. So, she decided to move up to the Duluth area and kind of enjoy her life that way. So, we wished her well, but it's left a big hole for us, so.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, if you recall, the city of Cannon Falls began working with SEMCRA 21, 22 to put together an application, and was recently awarded, just before Thanksgiving, the $591,675 to rehab 21 homes in Cannon Falls. For those of you who may not be aware of the program, the Small Cities Development Program basically will help reinvest in the community for low-to-moderate-income folks, for homes that we're looking to try and make sure that we keep on our tax rolls and available to folks in that, in that economic range. So, the grant program basically allows for a $25,000 forgivable 10-year loan. Actually, it was kind of an easy sell when I ended up moving to SEMCRA, because I'm a product of the program. I bought a home through SEMCRA, and I did not make my 10 years, but I repaid the program and reinvested into that program, and then they could reuse those dollars. So, what essentially happens is those who are income-eligible and qualify, they can go up to $25,000 of a forgivable 10-year loan. And if they live there six years or sell within six years, they pay back that grant 100%. And that's, those funds come back to Cannon Falls, and we can reinvest those dollars into other projects. If any time from year six to 10, it reduces 20% that they would have to repay. So, those funds always stay here. So, it's, it's a great program. Tonight, we're kind of on the last step of the finish line, or to get to the finish line with the state and the federal program, because the, the dollars did come from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So, tonight, in the packet, you will have seen the big, thick packet that is pretty much all of HUD required plans and resolutions for consideration. So, we will approve those, and I have, with Sarah's help, we posted the environmental review. Then, we will start the clock ticking tomorrow, and that will take about 28 days to go through a review and comment period with about 36 different organizations and agencies that I sent that to. Once that's done, on the 21st of February, I will request the funds be released, and we will get the ball rolling. So, we've already started to receive applications, and so, we're already creating a waiting list. So, we're really excited about that. I will refer to this document a little bit, if everybody's had a chance to see them. As listed in the council packet, you will have the Administrative Contract Resolution with SEMCRA, the Civil Rights Policy Resolution, the Residential Anti-Displacement Resolution, and the Authorization of and Release of Funds Resolution. In addition, we would look to see a motion to approve the various items, such as the Administrative Contract with SEMCRA, the Drug-Free Workplace Plan, the Fair Housing Plan, the Program Income Plan, the Section 3 Plan, as well as the Rehabilitation Standards, the Policies and Procedures for the Owner Occupied Rehab, the Walk Away Policy, and the Post-Grant Administrative Contract. So, as you look at these, if council look to approve or make a motion to approve the items discussed or presented as items 1, 2, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 16, that kind of covers it all, so. Are there any questions about the documents that were in there? I can certainly help to answer those questions at this time.
I was going to say to the council, so all of these different line items are all related to the same, so we can't just pass them, we have to pass them individually. But you can take questions on any of them?
Correct.
Any questions from the council?
I read through most of it this afternoon.
Light reading, is that what?
But it's, you know, this is, this is the same thing we talked about, when was it? Six months ago or longer?
Yeah. When we submitted the questionnaire to citizens to, which led to this information.
So, this is actually, what we're doing is just getting it rolling finally, correct?
I believe Karen came probably in the fall of '21 and came and made a presentation, and then, then there was questionnaires that were mailed out to the, the citizens in Cannon Falls sometime in '22. And then, the application was applied for, and then the grants, the grant funds were, or the city was awarded the funds in November.
Correct. Typically, those grant funds are awarded in September, and because HUD had not finalized its budget, they waited September, October, and then the end of November, so. The partnership with SEMCRA is basically, we make it a turnkey process. Um, the partnership with SEMCRA is basically, we make it a turnkey process for the city. Um, the only thing that will happen or take place is, once those funds are released, we begin rehabbing residents, um, in town. We will make a request to the state, the funds will be sent to the city, then we send a request to the city to disperse those funds to us, we pay all our contractors, vendors, and then we take care of the reporting after the grant is closed as well for the next 10 years. So that's all on us. Some of the interesting pieces, if anybody's in the, the contractors' services, uh, when I started in September with the organization, the delay on windows and siding was 18 weeks. Now, we're at 40.
Hmm.
Uh, we just had a contractor come back and say that when we were hoping to start in January, um, came back and said, it'll be October.
Oh.
So, uh, so we'll see what that, that timeline does, but we're early on in the process for Cannon Falls, so we, we will definitely be able to get, uh, some of those grants, grant funds spent. Some of my other communities, I'm gonna have to ask for a construction extension, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, how did, um, the number of houses get derived?
So, in my short tenure here, um, it's a competitive, um, scoring process. So they look based on need and, um, interest, and so I, they've kind of have it down to a science. They've been doing this since 1983, I believe, um, and Zombroda was the first community, uh, that received a grant, um, and so that 19 to 21, it seems like that's a good fit. Um, so, and-
Just curious.
We're fortunate that, um, Cannon Falls is also under the population of 5,000, where that's not good in other respects. It's good for us because we can go citywide. Some of the other grants that I'm working with have specific target areas, um, and for myself, um, I used to work in St. Charles, um, when I started here, there was somebody who was just across the line of, of that target area. So, we actually went back to deed and said, hey, you know, we wanna make sure that this program is accessible to everybody, and we wanna help as many people as we can, so Cannon Falls doesn't have to worry about that. So, we're excited to get going.
How do you guys determine if there's more than 21 qualified applicants? How do you determine who, who gets it? And is it you guys that decide? Is it SEMCRA?
Yep, first come, first served basis.
First, okay.
Yep, so, um, you know, there's usually a lot of, um, interest expressed, um, but, but there is some legwork to do, so, um, the, the first ones that follow through and get us all the documentation, we qualify.
Is there a waitlist, then, if you don't get to be one of the 21 picked?
There could be a waitlist.
Okay, so does the program come back to Cannon Falls at some point, or?
At some point, yep.
Okay.
I mean, if there's certainly way more need and interest, there's more need than I, that will determine the interest over the next couple of months, um, but if there is, I don't think we'd have a problem coming back and, and reapplying, so.
Any other questions from the council for Nick? Uh, Neil, do we have to pass, uh, each line item individually, so?
I think Nick is requesting items, uh, why don't you label them again?
Yeah.
Is it 1 through 16, I believe, or?
Yeah.
Thank you.
He'll want a motion to approve, um, that one group with the large numbers, and then, um-
That was, uh, resolution number, uh-
And then adopt the resolutions individually.
Okay, so for item A, that's basically the motion to approve, uh, the items that were discussed as 1, 2, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 16?
Correct.
And then we gotta do roll calls on all of them, too, Matt.
Okay. On each individual number?
No, no.
Just on the, what's on the agenda?
Just on this group, and then the four resolutions.
Got it. So I would take a motion and a second to approve, uh, the items that we discussed, which will be listed as 1, 2, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 16.
So moved.
Motion by Gesmi, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jepson. Uh, roll call, Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
It carries 6 to 0. So that moves us on to item B, resolution 2672, entering into the administrative contract with SEMCRA and redevelopment authority. Uh, roll call vote again. Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
And Steve?
Aye.
It carries.
I think you need a motion.
Did, did we need a motion?
I'm, I apologize, I go straight to it. Do I have a, did I get a motion and a second for item B?
Uh, I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Lundell?
Second.
Diane did it.
I think Diane did.
Diane got a second in there? We'll go through that again, then. Roll call for resolution 2672. Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
And Steve?
Aye.
And resolution 2672 carries. Resolution 2673, adopting a civil rights excessive force policy, I would take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Gesmi, second by Diane Johnson. Any further discussion? Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
And Steve?
Aye.
And resolution 2673 carries. Resolution 2674, adopting a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. Uh, I would take a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Lundell, second by Jepson. Uh, we'll take a roll call. Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
And Steve?
Aye.
Carries. And lastly, item E, resolution 2675, authorizing the release of funds on behalf of the city of Cannon Falls. I'd take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Lisa?
A second.
Uh, we'll give the second to Lundell.
Aye.
Uh, roll call vote, Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
And Steve?
Aye.
And it carries. That concludes council business, moves us on to reports. Um, nobody here from the chamber tonight for a report. Uh, EDA, Laura?
I wasn't here at the first meeting, so I wanna welcome all of the new council members to, um, to the, to your new seats. Um, I did want to also let everyone know that we did close on the Mulvahill property, um, that's across from the school in St. Ansgarz, so that was an exciting, um, win, I think, for the EDA. So now we'll start the legwork on, um, trying to get the, the planning and the grading plan and that kinda thing worked out, and devise what our plan's going to be going forward. Um, and I'm excited about this project, the SCDP, I've been working, I was working with Karen before on this, and now with Nick, welcome to SEMCRA. Uh, so I'm excited for the opportunity for 21 residents. I know that, I think I'd sent Nick six names, I think, before Christmas even, of people that had heard about the program or the funding that we were gonna be getting, so it's good that we've already got people interested in the program. So I just encourage people to either reach out to me, or Nick, I'm sure that the beacon will be, um, putting contact information in the paper online, so just make sure that you reach out if you're interested, um, we'll have details of what the qualifying information is, and SEMCRA will have those details on their website as well, so. Um, and then other in EDA business, um, in February, we'll start our goal planning, uh, for what 2023 looks like, what kind of items we can cross off our list, and, uh, move forward with, for '23.
Thank you.
Can I ask a, Laura, really quick question, so, um, and I'm sure all the details will come out, but is it for the 21 people, is it city proper, or is it county, or?
City, city proper.
It's city proper, and it has to be, and, um, it's the property owner can apply. They don't have to be, um, living in the prop, they don't have to be living in the home, but they have, the property owner has to be the applicant, not the renter.
Uh, park board, would that be?
I think we better back up on that one.
Could be a correction, I saw Nick.
It must be owner occupied.
Oh, it is not owner occupied?
Owner occupied.
I'm sorry, it's owner occupied, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I did that, too.
Thank you for the correction.
[laughing]
Uh, park board, Derek, would you be representative?
And to remember what we did, um, didn't we do the tree?
[inaudible].
Oh, yeah.
Presentation.
Bucky and Keith presented, and then we did the, um, the, the Emerald Ash Borer, and pool hire, I should just have Dan do it.
Yeah.
[laughing] Um, yeah, I think that was it, it was a good meeting.
All right. Uh, public works, do I?
Laura was at that one.
Well, I'm the chair, but-
Would you like it to be Dan?
Anne's the director. Really in charge.
Dan, do you have anything?
We discussed the, uh, the winter parking changes.
Which was on the agenda.
That was a big topic, that was on the consent agenda, so, yep.
Great. Uh, finance committee, Neil, would you like to talk about anything that we had happen that night, or?
We had a lot of discussion items.
We did.
You know, we went through, um, actually, we went through a lot of the things that we're gonna discuss at the first work session that you guys approved tonight, so I'll hold back on all of that, but we did talk about the, the reconstruction project, we talked about Hannah's Ben, we talked, um, everything, whatever else is going on in town, just to get the catch-up, and, uh, you guys will hear it at the next meeting.
Um, do we have anybody to represent the library board?
Oh, I went to the library board.
Okay.
Um, we voted on some new board members, the president, vice president, and the secretary. Just kinda met everybody. Couple people are moving, so they're no longer a part of it. Um, and the birthday build, the library will be 10 years old in March, so they wanna have a birthday party, so that's in the works, March 25th.
Cool.
Yeah.
Uh, planning commission, who?
Yeah, we met on, uh, January 9th, um, we only had one item on the agenda, and that was to rezone, uh, and an administrative subdivision, and it was all based on, um, Stalin Holdings, um, south of town where Allied Valve is, and it was pretty much so they could make a runway or a tunnel between one building and the other, but to do that, we had to go from a B2 district to an I1 district. Please correct me if I'm not saying it right, and, uh, by doing that, we actually created another lot that is usable, buildable, or sellable by doing this, and, uh, and we also approved that tonight on the consent agenda, and that's all we had, that, at that meeting.
Great. Efficient use of space?
Yep.
Um, the police commission, we just met, and our items were also in the consent agenda. All right. Uh, we'll go round the horn here, should we start with the departments, or are we covered there?
It's your call, Mayor.
I'll see if there, Danny, anything else?
Um, yeah, we could go today, we got a, a broken water main on Cannon, right between 3rd and 5th, which happens to be our 2023 project area, so, um, Doug Geisbers came in and dug a hole with precision, and the utility crew put the patch on, and we had everything back in service by about 1:30, so, went real well, yeah.
Awesome.
And, uh, today, that crew is busy hauling snow, making room for more, I guess, that we're getting this week, so, and they had the grader out trying to scrape off the streets, get rid of the, the rough streets, so, that's about it.
Diane?
Nothing tonight, but we should have something, a couple interesting things come in the next two or three months, so just stay tuned, and welcome again to everybody that's new.
I like it when she says interesting.
[laughing] Minnesota interesting?
Yes.
Uh, Laura, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I'm good, thank you.
Chief, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, just a reminder for residents to park on the streets, um, although the snow is loved by our snow skiers, snowshoers, snowmobilers, not so much by people who have to move their cars or get their cars ticketed or towed. So, uh, Wednesday into Thursday, uh, looks like we're probably some significant snowfall again. Our Public Works Department will be cleaning the streets, they've been doing a great job.